Okay, good evening, everyone. I think some people are starting to join the session now, so I'm going to give it a couple more minutes before we go ahead and get started with this macro review session for the evening. So I see, let's see, we've got four people in here now. So Diana, Nisha, Rishakash, and Jayashree. So, welcome. So I'll just give it another second to see if some more people want to join. And in the meantime, I'll see if I can get up my slideshow for us. So let's try in terms of view. Into a full screen here. And yeah, it looks like a few more people are joining. So that's great. So I'll give it another like 10 seconds or so. And then there we go. Okay, but let's go ahead and get started. So I want to thank you all for joining me this evening as we're going to be talking about how to prepare for the AP macro economics exam. So my name is Adam Witham. I recently finished my PhD in economics and I've been a tutor for Weizant, tutoring lots of students in microeconomics, macroeconomics, as well as econometrics. So as you all are preparing for your AP exam and then maybe entering college classes in the future with economics, feel free to reach out to me and I'd be happy to tutor you. And then just also wanted to say, this session is being recorded, so we'll have that available for you all to review. And then I also will plan to share my slides as well, so that you can go back and review these topics. So what I want to do first off is say what the AP macro economics exam is like. So to start us off here, the exam is very similar to AP microeconomics in terms of the formatting. So how the exam works, you'll have to start off 60 questions that are multiple choice. And then you'll have about 70 minutes to do these. So the way this is going to work out, you'll have just over a minute per question on average. And you can figure out basically how to allocate your time in there, but it's just over a minute on average for each of these. And again, this is pretty interesting, but the macro/micro exams, the majority of the weight is actually on the multiple choice questions. So two thirds of the credit will come from the multiple choice section. After you finish that off, we'll be turning into the free response sections. So how this is going to work, this counts for a third of the exam, you'll have an hour to do it, preceded by a 10-minute reading period. So this will give you a chance to read through the questions, get a feel for what they're like, and also maybe plan out how you want to allocate your time towards these different questions. So the first one is the long question. This is going to have multiple components to it and usually multiple subparts of these. So this long question is worth half of the points. So it's 10 points overall. And then you'll have two shorter questions as well for five points apiece. And that's going to be the entirety of the AP macro exam. So again, multiple choice taking the bulk of the weight and followed by the free response. And in terms of the concepts that are on the exam, the first, what they call unit, this is by the College Board, they would call it basic economic concept. So a lot of these ideas are going to be what we talk about tonight in the way of comparative advantage, absolute advantage, and also thinking about trade-offs and opportunity costs for countries and individuals. Then it's going to turn into economic indicators, business cycle theories, kind of thinking about what's happening in the way of national income and maybe thinking about GEP. You'll turn to thinking about the financial sector and thinking about what does it mean to actually have kind of extensions of business cycles in the way of effects on unemployment, effects on investment and consumption, and then also thinking about how the Federal Reserve and money supply fits into all of this. And then you'll turn into thinking about stabilization policies and finally ending with international trade and thinking about what does it mean to really have economic growth. So what we're actually starting with tonight with opportunity costs, absolute advantage, comparative advantage, even though it represents a relatively smaller weight of the exam, it's a very easy way to pick up some points on some of these questions. Because generally speaking, if there's any math involved in these types of problems or drawing graphs, they're usually very, very simple. So this is a way that we can maximize our points, especially on the multiple choice section. And if you do have to draw some graphs, really make up some points quickly on the free response. And this again, comparative absolute advantage definitely relate to economic growth, which is going to be carried into the themes of the later part of the course. So this could definitely be what you should expect on the exam to be looking at pretty frequently in questions. So again, 5 to 10%, you should expect to see these basic concepts dealing with opportunity costs comparative absolute advantage. So if there's a total of 60 questions on the exam, maybe you should be expecting, say, three to six questions of the multiple choice to deal with this. And very well possible, one of these free response questions could involve it. So that's why for tonight, my goal is the following, we're going to understand what does it mean to have an opportunity cost and a trade-off? We're going to think about what does it mean to have comparative advantage and absolute advantage? And finally, if we were to go and draw production possibilities curves and understand what does it mean in the way of output for a country, how can we determine comparative advantage that way as well? So we're going to work through it mathematically and then also with some graphs tonight. All right, start us off with, I want to understand what does it mean to actually have an opportunity cost? So probably the classic way you'll see this defined in a textbook is thinking of it really in terms of the value of the next best alternative. So for instance, if it's the case that I go to my dorm room and I'm studying on a Saturday as opposed to going to a football game, then what's the trade-off faced in studying on a Saturday? Well, it's the value or the fun that I could have had by going to the football game instead. So when we're thinking about opportunity costs, we're always thinking about what did I give up in place of my decision, in place of my action? So it reflects this trade-off idea. And it's of course based on this classic idea of scarcity. So why is it the case that there's a trade-off? It's because my time is scarce. If I had infinite time in my day and I could do everything simultaneously, then there's no trade-offs. We don't have a problem. But the point of economics is we frequently are going to be facing these trade-offs in the world. We're going to be constrained in our time, constrained in our resources. Maybe it's we're constrained by income and we have to make decisions based on that, what we choose to do. So to give you an example of really what does it mean to actually have an opportunity cost, I first want to say, suppose the situation where Jack can catch five fish or instead collect three baskets of apples. So what does it mean to actually have an opportunity cost for Jack? Or what does it mean to have a trade-off? So thinking of this, what you would want to do is you would take five fish divided by three apples. So five divided by three will tell you what does it mean to have this opportunity cost in simplest terms. In other words, Jack gives up 1.67 fish roughly for every one basket of apples. So in other words, if Jack is choosing to get a basket of apples in his time, he instead maybe would have been able to catch 1.67 fish. So this matters because we can think about what someone is having to sacrifice when they make a decision or when they make an action. So I want to say this also, if anyone at any time has any questions, feel free to stop me along the way because I absolutely love talking about these ideas with you all and I want to answer all of your questions so that we can best help you to prepare for your exam. So yeah, feel free at any time to stop me. So with opportunity costs, this is what I wanted to introduce, this idea of the math for it. So you would take the number associated with one action divided by the number associated with the other action. So five thirds is equivalent to 1.67 over one or 1.67 fish. Okay, so now that we have some idea of what it means to actually have an opportunity cost, I want to define what it means to have a production possibilities curve or production possibilities frontier. So this is a way of illustrating opportunity costs for an individual or a country as well as maximum production that's going to be possible. So because this is an AP macro exam, you all certainly may expect to have this presented in terms of countries. But for those of you all that are also maybe taking the AP microeconomics exam, so we led a session on that last night, you could easily expect to have comparative advantage, absolute questions, absolute advantage questions on that as well. It just could be the case that it's going to be framed in terms of individuals, maybe people as opposed to countries. So these core ideas at economics relate to both micro and macro, and that's why I wanted to make sure to cover these ideas for you tonight so that for those of you maybe taking both exams, these ideas will be related to both of these. So we said that production possibilities curve will illustrate what is the maximum possible and what these trade-offs are. So if I draw this curve, I'm going to first show you what it looks like graphically and then we're going to talk about this efficiency idea. So this is a production possibilities frontier, production possibilities curve for an individual. So on one axis, the x-axis maybe, you'll have one action. So this, in that example of Jack earlier, collecting apples or fishing, this could be catches fish and action two could be collects apples. So if this was the case that he could either do five fish or three apples, this is actually telling you, call it your endpoints, where your curve actually hits the axes. And any point along this curve, if I was to draw a line between these two points, the maximum amount of fish I could catch or the maximum number of apples that I could collect, this is what's going to be called efficient. So anywhere along this line is what's called efficient. So what does it mean if he was to go and catch one fish and only do one basket of apples? So that maybe is some point right about here? What does that mean? It means that Jack maybe didn't work as hard as he could have. In other words, he's not maximizing his skills, he's not maximizing his potential. So this would be considered an inefficient quantity of fish caught or apples collected. So anywhere inside the production possibilities curve is called inefficient. Anywhere along the line is efficient. And anywhere outside of this is not going to be feasible. So Jack, sure, would absolutely love to catch 20 fish and get five baskets of apples. However, that's beyond his abilities. So what does it mean to really be outside the feasible set? It means that it's not currently, we don't have the technology to do it, maybe we're not that skilled yet, or it's just outside the ability to produce at that point. Now, this is certainly possible with economic growth to maybe increase our productivity. So what does it mean to have economic growth? This is the case where we're able to produce more over time. So all of a sudden, if Jack maybe takes a class on how to fish or how to be a better apple picker, it could be the case that now he's more productive and that he can do more of these things in his time. He's better at them and he'll be able to produce more. So this could shift the entire curve outward. But at the given moment, he's going to be constrained by his abilities and constrained in his time. All right, so that's what I wanted to first illustrate, this idea of a graph. So thinking about the exam on a free response question, you certainly could be expected to draw one of these production possibilities curves for an individual or a country. So for instance, if we're considering a place like Mexico and they are maybe wanting to grow crops or produce clothing, so they're trying to do two things, either one of these things they can do. What the production possibilities curve is going to say is depending on how a country is going to devote resources, it can basically get a maximum point of how it can produce clothes or a maximum point of how it can grow crops and it can do any combination of these two. So a production possibilities curve is really useful for thinking about opportunity costs for a country or an individual and thinking about what they have to give up to do more of that other choice, that other action. Okay? So I want to think now about what does it mean to actually have this idea of absolute advantage? So these are concepts that frequently are missed in AP macroeconomics and AP microeconomics because people usually think about absolute advantage and comparative advantage in the same way. And in reality, they're very, very, very different than each other. So I want to define these and then give you lots of examples so you can see really what their differences are going to be. So for absolute advantage, this is a situation when a person or a country is able to produce just more overall than another. So if we're considering two countries and we're thinking about, say, the United States and a country like Iceland, if the United States can produce more of a crop in a given year, then it has the absolute advantage. So if it can produce more total, more output, it has the absolute advantage. So for instance, if you're ever in a situation where you're thinking about the United States, this is where we're an extremely skilled country. So if we're an extremely productive country, if the United States must choose to grow wheat or manufacture computer chips relative to another country, we certainly might have the absolute advantage in each of these actions or each of these possibilities. And the reason that is, is because the United States has an extremely productive, educated workforce. So for instance, if we see the case that about 15 years is what someone's expected to go to school in the US, that means just about everyone goes to college and basically nearly finishes an undergraduate degree. So that is actually where we are in the United States right now. That can be very different than another country that is glasswired more as developing. So if you compared a developing country to the highly developed United States, you certainly might always see, United States can do usually more on a lot of different types of goods. So that's the absolute advantage. But this is very different from comparative advantage. So this is the tricky one, and that's why I want us to really spend some time on it this evening. Comparative advantage is a situation when a person or a country is able to produce something more efficiently based on their opportunity costs. In other words, it's going to be more advantageous for us to just specialize at that one task. So I want to think back to my example that I just used with the United States. So we're able to either grow wheat or produce these computer microchips. That doesn't mean that the United States has the comparative advantage in each of these things. In other words, there's a trade-off in producing wheat and that's in producing microchips. So if I'm focusing all my efforts on farming and growing wheat, then I'm not putting my effort, my time towards microchips. So there's a trade-off that I'm going to be facing in this. Okay? So just because it's the case that I might be able to produce both of these things, the US is constrained by scarcity, just as everyone is, we should be making decisions based on what we are best at. So the best use of our time, what are we most skilled at? In other words, just because we can produce both with absolute advantage, doesn't mean we want to. So the US is going to have a comparative advantage in something, but that doesn't mean we can ever have a comparative advantage in everything. So this is a key point I want to note here for you all. The United States is possible to have absolute advantage in both wheat and microchips. It can only have the comparative advantage in one of these, which means it's what we are best at. So translating this, relative to other countries, maybe the US maybe just wants to grow wheat. Therefore, if other countries just produce microchips and we can trade with each other, this is now when we're going to be most productive with our time. So just let the US go and specialize in wheat, let another country specialize in microchips and then we'll trade. Okay, so comparative advantage, remembering this, this is based on our opportunity costs. And then it's the case where a country can only have comparative advantage for one action. So we're going to be doing lots of examples with this now, when we're going to be illustrating just which countries or which people can have absolute advantages versus comparative advantages. So to start us out with here, what I want to do is I want to work through a bunch of practice problems with you all. So the first thing I want to do is I'm going to read this question aloud and then I want to give you a little bit of time to think about these answers or choices and then see if you can figure out which one's the correct one. All right, so first, we're going to consider a situation where the US and Canada are deciding what to produce. So they each can produce corn or maple syrup in terms of hundreds. The United States can produce 100 bushels of corn or 65 gallons of syrup. Canada can produce however, 95 bushels of corn or 75 gallons of syrup. So which of the following statements is going to be true? All right, so to answer this, you're going to want to think back to that math that I talked about earlier in terms of opportunity costs, where you think about dividing one number by the other for a particular country. And then thinking about given comparative advantages, absolute advantages, which of these countries is going to have it? So whoever can produce the more, the most of something, more than the other country, that's the absolute advantage. Comparative advantage is based on what our trade-offs are in terms of corn and syrup. All right, so I'll give you a second now to think about this. And when you all come to an answer, feel free to put it in the chat. Yeah, think back to your opportunity costs for the US in terms of corn and syrup, and you'll want to calculate it for Canada as well. And think about who has the higher number. Okay, so let's go ahead and start working through this question together. So first off, the answer is going to be A, thinking about the opportunity cost of the US for corn. But actually, to show this to you all, I'm going to work out this question entirely from scratch now because I want to give you all an opportunity to see what the math looks like and how you should be approaching questions like this. So on this next board, I'm going to work it out entirely from scratch for you all. So for the, say, US, it was the case that we could either do corn or syrup. So just writing out our numbers again here. So with the case of the US, we were able to do 100 corn or 65 syrup. With Canada, what were we able to do? It was the case of 95 and 75? All right, so now what I want to start doing is thinking about who has the absolute advantage for corn. So I want to compare US corn to Canada corn. So because 100 is greater than 95, I'm going to now say that US has the comparative, the absolute advantage or corn. Let's think about for syrup, 65 versus 75. So Canada's 75 is higher. So therefore, Canada has the absolute advantage for syrup. All right, so now we've determined who has the absolute advantages for each of these two types of goods. To go and determine comparative advantage, now we've got to work out the math. So here's what I would do. I would say, let's take the, for corn, first off, I want to take the US's 100. So I'm going to write out 100c divided by 65s. So when I take 100 divided by 65, what I'm really trying to do is translate it into like a single gallon of syrup or a single bushel of corn. I'm trying to get this in terms of simplest form so that I can readily kind of compare what's going on here. So this is roughly 1.5c over s. So here's what I would recommend doing whenever you're doing these types of problems, always write out what the letter is that goes with the product in the numerator and the denominator. Because when you're writing this out as an opportunity cost in the end, it'll help you to keep all of this very clear and organized. So for the US, how our opportunity cost for corn works is 1.5 corn per gallon of syrup. So now I want to do it for Canada. So again, our corn, this is 95c over 75s. So now what I want to do is again, carry out a little bit of math here, 95 divided by 75 is equal to 1.27 or just rounding it now, 1.3c over s. So thinking about this, which number is higher, 1.5 or 1.3? Well, it's going to be the 1.5, which means the US is going to have the comparative advantage for corn. So whichever number is higher is going to be the comparative advantage for output. So the US has the comparative advantage, which by default now means Canada has to have it for syrup. You can also work this out with math and you should see that this number is going to work out so that Canada's is higher. So this is now 65. So this is now 65 S over 100 C is equal to 0.65 S over C. And now for Canada for syrup, I'm going to take 75 S over 95 C. So if I take 75 now divided by 95, what do I get now? Should be 0.79 roughly. Again, showing that idea. So this means, once you determine the comparative advantage for one country, you know, the other country has the comparative advantage for the other action. So Canada has the comparative advantage. All right, so now we've worked out everything possible with this question to know absolute advantages, opportunity costs, knowing comparative advantages. So thinking back to our question, I think it's not, and not going to allow me to show this very easily. Yeah, so how this worked was it was the case of the United States having a opportunity cost of 1.5 bushels of corn per gallons of syrup. So I'm just going to erase this real quick. Just so that we can go back and review it quick. So opportunity cost of the US for corn is roughly 1.54 bushels per gallons of syrup. So that I kept it rather than rounding it here. So this statement is true. Canada has the absolute advantage in corn, comparative advantage in corn, absolute advantage in syrup. This statement is false. It's actually the case where Canada has the comparative in syrup and the absolute in syrup. So this statement's false. The US has the comparative advantage in both corn and syrup. That's impossible. So no country can have comparative advantage in both actions. So you can eliminate this on an AP exam right off the bat, if you ever see something like that. Finally, opportunity cost of Canada for syrup is roughly 1.27 bushels per gallons of syrup. Again, based on the numbers we calculated it out, that's actually not mathematically possible either. Okay. So now what I want to do is work through another type of question with you all. And this one's, this one's designed to be pretty tricky. But I'd much rather we talk about it in a prep session rather than you all seeing it for the first time on an exam. So I want, I'll first read this question out loud and see if someone can tell me how this question is at all different from the last question. All right, so now with our practice problem, we're going to consider a situation where we've got two people, Ann and Bob. And they're going to be deciding what to do with their time. So they each can build birdhouses or plant trees. And Ann can build a birdhouse in three hours or plant a tree in two hours. Bob, however, is able to build a birdhouse in five hours or plant a tree in three hours. So what's the opportunity cost of Bob for planting trees? And is it going to be the case that Bob has the comparative advantage for planting trees? Okay. So before we actually start working through this question together, I want to see if you all can recognize, how is this one different? How is it worded differently than the one we've worked through already? There's one really, really, really big thing that's different. All right, so let's see in the chat. It uses time exactly. Very good. So this is something that's really different. So the last question, I said, what the US or Canada could do holding time constant, they could either produce a certain amount of syrup or a certain amount of corn. Now I'm saying, we can either build one birdhouse or one tree, but here's the amount of time it's going to take us. So this question, you'll work out very similarly, but the comparative advantage, it looks a little bit different in terms of how we interpret it. All right, so I'll give you all a minute to try, try this on your own and then we'll, we'll start working through it together. Okay, so to think about this, we first need to understand that we're thinking about time now as opposed to output. So the correct answer is going to be C, 0.6 trees per birdhouse. And Bob is going to have the comparative advantage for planting trees. But let's actually work this out together now to understand how, how we can do this. So I'm going to write out my two people. Ann and Bob. And first thing I want to do is think about in terms of, say, planting trees. So here's how we're going to do it. So for the case of Ann, we said Ann can build a birdhouse in three hours or plant a tree in two hours. So Ann is going to be two, I'm going to call it tree over three birdhouse, which is two thirds, which is 0.67 tree over birdhouse. Okay, so now we've got some sort of opportunity cost for Ann. Now we're going to work it out for Bob. Bob, we said, can either build a birdhouse in five hours or plant a tree in three hours. All right, so for, for this, now we're going to say three tree over five bird. So notice it takes Bob a lot longer to build a single birdhouse. Three divided by five is 0.6 tree over bird. So here's the biggest difference between how we're doing this now and that problem we worked out earlier. If the question involves output, so how much you can do total. So you can do that, how many gallons of syrup or how many bushels of wheat? That's output. And when you're trying to figure out who has comparative advantage, you're looking for whoever has the highest number. With time, though, it works the opposite way. You're trying to figure out who has the lower number to have comparative advantage. So in this case, Bob has 0.6 or Ann has 0.67. In other words, because Bob has the lower number, the lower ratio, Bob has the comparative advantage for planting trees. So the answer should be 0.6 and yes, Bob has it, has the comparative. So this question, I wanted to make sure to do with you all this evening. Because even though the math looks very similar, it's different how you compare the numbers at the end to determine comparative advantage. All right, is everyone good there? Okay, so I'm going to clear this real quick and then we're going to move to one other type of problem now. And this one I've now set up structured like what you could actually see on a free response section. So rather than a multiple choice, you could easily have this as either a short question on the free response or maybe as some part of the long question on the free response. So now I've got, I want to consider a situation with Italy and France deciding what to do. So they can either produce pizzas or croissants in terms of thousands. So Italy can produce 100 pizzas or 50 croissants. France, however, can produce 85 pizzas or 65 croissants. So the first part of this is I'm asking you all, which country has the absolute advantage for croissants? And then which country has the absolute advantage for pizzas? Okay, so I'll give you a second to think about who has these absolute advantages. And then just go ahead and put it in the chat when you've determined answer to this. So yeah, we'll, we'll do it piece by piece. So we'll first talk about part I. And then what will we'll move on to part two, once, once we've actually now talked about it together. So yeah, as soon as you determine who has absolute advantage, put it in the chat. So for, for this, what you're trying to do is really compare who can do more of each action. So for each action, let's see, we've got in chat, France for croissants, Italy for pizza is what we have here. So let's go and try to do this. So Italy can do 100 pizzas, France 85 pizzas. So because Italy can produce more pizzas total output, Italy has the absolute advantage for pizzas. Now I want to think about this in terms of croissants. So Italy can do 50, France can do 65. So because France has the higher number, France has the absolute advantage. Okay. So that was exactly right for, for some of the answers I saw in the chat. Good. So to show you all, Italy has the absolute in pizzas, France has the absolute in croissants. So now to do the comparative advantages, this may be a little bit more involved. Now we actually have to do some math. So determine comparative advantages for croissants and who has the comparative for pizzas. We all want to think about this in terms of opportunity costs, doing that math again and calculating out their rates. All right, so I'll give you a second to do that. And then we'll talk about it again. So yeah, put it in the chat when you have, have done these opportunity cost calculations and you feel, I feel you know who has the comparative advantage. So seeing some answers here in the chat, so let's see. Have some people saying France for croissants, Italy for pizzas. All right, so let's go and see. So to determine now comparative advantages, I typed all this out for us so that we can easily refer to this going back and forth. So for pizza, first off, let's take Italy. So for 100 pizzas divided by 50 croissants, so 100 divided by 50 turns into two pizzas per croissant. All right, so now I want to think for France for pizza. So this was 85 pizzas over 65 croissants, so 85 divided by 65 is 1.3. So based on this, Italy has the comparative advantage in pizzas, which means by default now, France has to have it for croissants. But to show you, to show the math along with it as well, France should have a higher number. So for Italy, now we flip the fraction out the other way. So 50 croissants over 100 pizzas is 0.5 croissants per pizza. For France, 65 croissants over 85 pizzas, 65 over 85 is roughly 0.76 croissants per pizza. So again, France is going to have that comparative advantage for croissants. Italy's going to have the comparative advantage for pizzas. Okay. So finally, this last question could say, illustrate the production possibilities curves for both Italy and France. But here's the trick, do it in a single graph. So this one's going to be a little bit hard to put in the chat. But I'll give you all the, a second to think about this before we actually try to look at one together for the answer for this. So by doing it on a single graph, it really allows me to compare their opportunity costs pretty easily. Because that, that line we referred to earlier as like the efficiency line. Now it's really going to show me their opportunity costs in terms of pizzas and croissants, what they have to give up to do the other. Okay, so let's go ahead and now look at the graph together. So how this is going to work? I want to have one of these actions or the output on one axis. And I have the other axis for the other, so I'm going to have croissants on one and pizzas on the other. And now by showing the maximum points for each country of pizzas and croissants, I can now compare their comparative, comparative advantages and compare their, really their opportunity costs. So for the case of France, they could do 85 pizzas or 65 croissants. Italy, we said, can do 100 pizzas or 50 croissants. So because I see different slopes of these lines, it means each of these countries is going to have a comparative advantage in one of these two things. So again, drawing something out like this can be really useful because one, it allows me to very easily see who has absolute advantage. So because the red line is higher than the blue, Italy's going to have it for pizzas. Blue line is farther out than the red. Therefore, France has the absolute advantage for croissants. And based on these slopes of the lines, now we can determine ultimately who has comparative advantages. So France being for croissants, Italy for pizzas. Okay. So finally, what I wanted to say is takeaway points from this evening before we're, I'm going to turn it over to you all for questions. Takeaway points. One country is able to have the absolute advantage for both actions or events. So it's possible, if we, if we actually had something like, say, producing pizza and pasta, Italy might actually have the absolute advantage in both of those things relative to another country. But it is not ever going to have comparative advantage for both. It's, it, it's going to be the case where it's better at one of these two. And based on how another country is going to be that maybe we can trade with. And based on how another country is going to be that maybe we can trade with, it should be the case that they'll specialize and just do one of those things. So in that example, we just worked out, Italy wanted to just focus on pizzas, France just wants to focus on croissants, and these were based on their comparative advantages. And then finally, when you're working out any sort of mathematics with these types of problems, I want you to ask yourself the question, is this problem referring to units in terms of output, or is it going to be in terms of time? So that's really the question you want to ask yourself, because that was the difference between these two problems we worked through earlier with, say, the US and Canada in terms of output, so 100 bushels, 65 gallons, this is output. In other words, when I'm calculating out opportunity costs, I take the higher number of the two to determine comparative advantage. On the flip side, if I'm dealing with time, so three hours versus two hours, now when I'm calculating opportunity costs, I want to take the lower of these values to determine who has the comparative advantage. So just taking one second on the exam and just making a note to yourself beside it, is it time or is it output, can really help you in making sure that you make the correct decision in the end, as far as who has the particular comparative advantage. Okay? So now I'm going to turn it over to you all for questions. All right, so we got one in the chat now. So what percent of the points do you need to get a five overall on the exam? What percent of points do you need to get a four? Yeah, so that's a great question. There is no set answer to this, because it's heavily going to depend on how people do on the multiple choice section or on the short answer question. So with this, there's not going to be any guaranteed number to get you a five or a guaranteed number that you have to get right to get a four. Always, I've always known it to be the general case that you should be shooting for at least 70% of the questions correct to start be getting into four or five territory. But really, you want to be trying to focus on really at least 65%, really 70%, so that you can be trying to get this. Now, I will say, relative to other AP exams out there, frequently colleges and universities will give credit for either a four or a five on the macroeconomics and microeconomics exams. So for instance, when I've dealt with a lot of colleges and universities now, and kind of understanding what their practices are, where some exams out there, it might be the case that you have to get a five on, say, a US history exam in order to receive credit. Usually, microeconomics and macroeconomics exams, as long as you're scoring a four or a five, that will give you credit for them. So usually, the AP micro course will translate for most places into a Principles of Microeconomics credit in college, and the AP macro will translate into Principles of Macroeconomics. So usually, this is your 101 and 102 level economics classes. But yeah, so it's, there's no set answer as to what percent you have to get correct. And again, because this year with COVID and doing some digital tests, this could be changing very much, these required percentages. So there is no easy answer to that, but I would say, kind of going with historical record, you really want to at least be going with, say, 70%. All right, some other questions here in the chat. How much overlapping materials is there between macro and micro conceptually? Great question. So with these basic concepts of, say, comparative advantage, absolute advantage, opportunity costs, this is going to hold for both of these classes. It's also the case, you want to know supply and demand very well for each of these classes. So even though we tend not to think, you know, about supply and demand in terms of macro that frequently, we usually do have aggregate supply later and aggregate demand, and understanding really what it means to have their effects on general equilibrium, that it's still very much related. So last night I did a recorded session for WISEN on the AP microeconomics exam, and we focused on supply and demand. So you may want to check out that session. I know some of the people I'm seeing here in the session were there last night. Great to see you all again. But you want to maybe make sure that you can do supply and demand and these opportunity cost questions very easily to help you with both of these exams. So other questions here. What topic has the hardest questions? So thinking back, yeah, I'm going to scroll back to the beginning of my slides here in terms of the breakdown of these units. It's again, going to depend very much on the person, what maybe they relate to more. But questions related to stabilization policies, where you see really 20 to 30% of the exam, these questions might take a little bit longer to solve. So I wouldn't argue that they're harder, but they may take a little more time in trying to actually go and understand what does it mean to have long-term effects. So that's why I especially wanted to focus on this material tonight, because some of these questions, they're not terribly difficult with the mathematics, and they can be ways of really maximizing your score early on in the exam. So really trying to get down some base points for you all. And then is one of these exams harder or easier? Another question. Microeconomics and macroeconomics, I would not argue that one is harder or easier than the other. Both of these exams are designed to challenge your understanding of these core economic ideas, so very much so at the beginning. So say for the first unit of each of these respective classes, they're going to be virtually identical, and then each of them are going to take on their own special topics within them. So where macroeconomics frequently will be thinking about what does it mean to have long-term effects on an economy, things maybe on a national level, or maybe even an international level with trade and global economies, microeconomics is going to be much more focused on the individual and on the firm. So we're going to be thinking about what does it mean to actually have costs for a firm, and what does it mean to have supply changing, and what does it mean to have different types of competition? So like perfect competition, imperfect competition, and monopoly, so different market structures. So both of these classes are just very much different in terms of the topics covered. So I wouldn't argue that one is more difficult than the other. They just take on different areas. All right, so any other last questions as we're closing up here? I'm checking on the times, we're right at 7:58 right now. So if they're, all right, one last question. Oh, yep, absolutely. No problem. Okay. What is the best approach for studying? Great question again. So what I would recommend is creating a little guide for yourself for each of these respective units. So for instance, when I did at the very end here, like takeaway points, so one country can't have absolute for both, can have absolute for both, it can't for comparative advantage, and then thinking whoever has opportunity cross with the higher number for output has the comparative advantage. If it's for time, it has the lower value, that's when it's going to have the comparative advantage. So just making little notes like that for each of these respective sections is what I think is really helpful for studying, because then you're really just remembering what are these key ideas, so that I can know if I have any type of question, how I can really apply them pretty quickly and figure out what they're trying to ask and how to solve it. So that's what I would do. I would try to write out just a few key bullet points for each of these sections, asking yourself, what are the key ideas? And that's what's going to help you to really answer just about any type of question on the exam. All right, so again, I want to thank you all so much for taking this chance to talk about opportunity costs, trade-offs, and absolute comparative advantages. I want to wish you all the absolute best of luck on your AP macroeconomics exam soon. And I also want to let you know that WISEN is hosting a number of sessions related to all different sorts of AP topics. So if you all are taking other AP exams, say in calculus, or chemistry, or English, or any of these other areas, feel free to check out these other events being hosted on Eventbrite. And also, my information as a tutor for WISEN is being put in the chat for you all and is also available on the Eventbrite page. So I would be happy to work with you all leading up to the exam and answering any questions that you all have. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and stop the screen sharing now, and I want to wish you all best of luck again on that exam.